Good evening and welcome to the December 7th
December 7th.
Board of Education meeting. My name is Rob Jackson. I am not a member of the Board of Education. However, at the December meeting, the Board of Education has the opportunity to participate in its annual reorganization, and so we will get to that momentarily. For now, though, I'd like to welcome each of you. We're very excited about this evening. We have a wonderful opportunity to recognize students and staff, and we have a special holiday treat for you coming up in just a few moments. But before that, I would like to recognize Bog Sound Elementary School Assistant Principal, Nikki Sasser, who is going to introduce us to two fine young ladies who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Sasser?
Good afternoon, everyone. We are very pleased to have Addison Kennedy and Paris Harkley. Both are fifth grade students at Bog Sound Elementary, and they are regulars on our morning announcements, so we always look forward to seeing them on our morning announcements. Paris loves art, and she told me her favorite sport is softball. And Ms. Addison, she loves to read, and she loves to dance. So these are our two shining fifth graders, and we'll have them come up and say the pledge.
(Inaudible)
Actually, invocation?
Just one second.
Yes, sir. You may be seated.
(Inaudible).
As bad as you need to pray.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Actually, invocation?
Just one second.
Yes, sir. You may be seated.
(Inaudible).
As bad as you need to pray.
Congratulations. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. McLean for invocation.
If you stand or bow your heads with me, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for all of our many, many blessings. Thank you for all of our hard-working youth that represent our system so well. Thank you for all of our dedicated employees that have chosen to serve the youth of Carteret County. We ask that you be with us today and always. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. In accordance with Carteret County Schools Board of Education Policies 2200 and 2210, an annual organizational meeting for the election and qualifications of officers will be held regularly at the regularly-scheduled December meeting. The Chair of the Carteret County Board of Education shall perform all duties required by law or by board policy for the office, shall preside at the meetings of the Board, execute all documents on behalf of the Board as approved by the Board, approve the proposed agenda for Board meetings as prepared by the Superintendent, and perform any additional duties as authorized by the Board. The Chair shall have the same rights as all other Board members, that is, to introduce and/or second any motion or resolution, to participate in discussions, and to vote on all matters in accordance with Robert's Rules of Orders. Nominations are now in order for Chairperson of the Carteret County Schools Board of Education. Board members, are there nomination for Chairperson for the Carteret County Public Schools Board of Education?
I move Clark Jenkins for Chair.
Mr. Jenkins is nominated. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Jenkins to serve as the Chairperson for the Carteret County Schools Board of Education, please state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Jenkins.
Well, thank you.
It's on you.
I guess it goes to me now.
Yes.
All right, now we need to move on to Vice Chair. And do we have any nominations on the floor for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Brittany Wheatley.
Ms. Wheatley has been nominated. Any other nominations? Very good. Ms. Wheatley has been nominated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And you get another year as well, Ms. Wheatley.
Thank you.
How exciting. I'd just like to tell everybody, thank you for coming tonight. It's December. Christmas is right around the corner. Mr. McKay had some great Christmas music on, and I am very excited about our meeting tonight, and I'm really excited about the new year coming up. So we're going to move on with a whole bunch of recognizations, so Dr. Jackson will do that for us.
Thank you. Good evening again, Board members and all those who are present. We're extremely excited to have the opportunity to recognize students in a variety of areas and staff members as well. The first recognition we have for you this evening, we'd like to recognize a senior at Croatan High School, Ms. Navaya Sales. I believe she's actually just outside the door and is going to be stepping in. Board members, Navaya is the state champion, cross-country champion, who won that championship at the IBM Redmond Sports Complex in Kernersville, November 6th. Congratulations, state champion.
She won it easily, also.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Navaya.
Keep standing up. Keep standing up.
All right.
Board members, while you're standing, I'd like to invite in some of Navaya's teammates. The Croatan High School Men's Cross-Country Team placed second in the state at the State Cross-Country Championship at the same complex in Kernersville, November 6th. Congratulations to our state runners-up from Croatan High School.
Congratulations, guys.
Board members, at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Heather Boston, who's our Director of Student Support Services, and Ms. Allison Dees, who's our Director of Career and Technical Education for two very special student recognitions. Ms. Boston, Ms. Dees?
Hi, thank you. The, I'll wait for y'all to get seated.
We're confused.
Unless you want to.
You're going to have to stand back up. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established by President Lyndon Johnson in 1964, and since that time, the program has honored over 8,000 outstanding high school seniors. The mission of the program is to recognize and honor outstanding high school seniors and thereby encourage high attainment among all students. So first, there are two categories, the first one being the general education nominee. And so first, I would like to recognize Juan Lara Torres. He is a senior at MAST. Come on up.
Congratulations.
Mr. Johnson, come on up this way.
Yes.
Same idea for just a second.
Yes, all right. So Juan has a GPA of 4.667. Yes. He was the first student in his cohort to complete the Associate of Arts degree and is on track to complete his Associate of Science before he graduates from MAST.
Wow.
Yes. He is bilingual. He speaks both Spanish and English. He has maintained his strong academic performance while working with his family, doing construction after school, on weekends, and on holidays. He hopes to go to NC State University upon graduation. He is an extraordinary student and person. I have heard about him from the time he was little, y'all. From the moment I took over this role, I have heard about him, and so I am so excited to be here recognizing him. We are proud to recognize him as Carteret County Schools Presidential nominee in the general category. I couldn't be more proud.
The next category in the U.S. Presidential Scholars is a CTE, a Career and Technical Education nominee, and our nominee is Meredith Brooks. Meredith is a senior at East Carteret High School.
Meredith has a GPA of 4.3. She is a four-year letter in soccer. She has been an officer in FFA for four years. She has held the position of Sentinel Secretary and is currently the FFA President. She is also an active member of the Skills USA and holds an office position as well. Meredith maintains her strong academic performance while working, being an active member of her CTSOs, and being a member of a travel soccer club for the last four years. She has been a lifeguard for Fort Macon for the last three years and will be the headguard for all new employees this summer. Meredith is a well-rounded student who is not afraid to participate and take the lead. She plans to attend a four-year university and major in agriculture with a primary focus on the supply chain, and we could not be more proud of her to recognize her as Carteret County Public Schools Presidential nominee in the Career and Technical Education category.
Board members, at this time, we have the opportunity to recognize a couple of staff members. I'd first like to invite forward a incredible teacher who also happens to be from Croatan High School, Mr. Stevens, if you would please come forward. Mr. Jim Stevens teaches in the Exceptional Children's Program. He has been selected as the 2021-2022 EC Exceptional Educator and represented our school system admirably, incredibly well, at the North Carolina 2021 70th Conference on Exceptional Children. Congratulations, Mr. Stevens.
And Mr. Stevens, before you leave, I've watched Mr. Stevens work for the past several years, and what you do is heroic. I mean, I've never seen or heard an ugly word come out of your mouth until the other day at Lowe's. I tried to return an appliance, but.
I returned it.
But I think you are a saint, and we are so fortunate to have you, and I just really, really appreciate what you do for our county, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, I'm incredibly excited to invite forward Ms. Allison Graham. As Ms. Graham comes forward, I'm just very excited to share with you that Ms. Graham has been selected as the North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association North Carolina Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year, representing the state of North Carolina. She serves as our state's representative for the National Association of Secondary School Principals, which will select an Assistant Principal of the Year for the entire country, and we're looking forward to her being back when she receives that recognition. She will be attending a national principals conference in 2022 and does an incredible job at Morehead City Middle School. Ladies and gentlemen, the 2022 North Carolina Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Allison Graham. Congratulations. I'd like to invite back up, the guy behind the camera, we'll make him stand in front of it this time. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, DPI's Digital Teaching and Learning Division, has selected our own Carteret County Public Schools Chief Technology Officer, Mike McKay, as the 2021-2022 Southeast Regional Chief Technology Officer of the Year and will go forward in the state competition representing our region. Congratulations, Mr. McKay.
Good job.
Board members, we are closing in on that special holiday treat. I promised you if you would stand there and take all those pictures, so thank you for doing that. I know how much you enjoy recognizing so many of our students and staff members. Before we continue on, though, I do want to recognize our own Board of Education. The Carteret County Public Schools Board of Education was recognized by the state North Carolina School Boards Association with the Silver Bell Award, and that's actually in the framed certificate next to Mr. Whitford. That award is for your commitment to your own personal professional development and pursuit of those things that are required statutorily for Board of Education members, but for you going above and beyond. So congratulations to our Board of Education. We certainly appreciate each of you. At this time, I'd like to invite forward maybe the lady of the evening, Ms. Kay Zemorino. As many recognitions as we've had from Croatan High School, Croatan High School, as you know, Board members, come on up, Ms. Zemorino, won the state Wachovia Cup, Wells Fargo Cup, and actually, this evening, we have for Croatan High School and the conference Wells Fargo Cup. What I love about this particular competition is that in the Wells Fargo Cup, every sport counts equally. So women's golf is just as important as football, it's just as important as volleyball, it's just as important as track, and so to win the cup means that the entire school athletics program is committed to every student athlete and all of their teams, and so we have the conference cup for Croatan High School.
(Inaudible).
Go ahead.
No, no.
Go ahead.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do we need to keep standing up?
Yes, thank you. The other cup there is actually for West Carteret High School. Principal Paletti has had a wrestling match that Ms. Zemorino is going to be racing across town to get to in just a few moments, the county championships in wrestling this evening, and so we'll be delivering West Carteret's conference Wells Fargo Cup as well. So congratulations to West Carteret High School for earning that award. Thank you for delivering that. And now, Board members, to the holiday treat that I have been promising you earlier, I was able to travel to Winston-Salem to see this group represent our school system at the North Carolina Music Educators Conference in Winston-Salem. At your places, Board members, you have a copy of the program. This group was invited by the state Music Educators Association to perform for the entire conference. They represented our school system, and I can't tell you how proud I was to be in the audience in Winston-Salem, along with my colleagues from across the state, as our young men and women represented us. They are ably led by Mr. Ashton Humphries. Board members, invite a guest, all who are here with us, the Croatan High School Vocal Ensemble, Maestro.
(Inaudible).
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 In accordance with Carteret County Schools Board of Education policies 2200 and 2220 2210, an annual organizational meeting for the election and qualifications of officers will be held regularly at the regularly-scheduled December meeting. The Chair of the Carteret County Board of Education shall perform all duties required by law or by board policy for the office, shall preside at the meetings of the Board, execute all documents on behalf of the Board as approved by the Board, approve the proposed agenda for Board meetings as prepared by the Superintendent, and perform any additional duties as authorized by the Board. The Chair shall have the same rights as all other Board members, that is, to introduce and/or second any motion or resolution, to participate in discussions, and to vote on all matters in accordance with Robert's Rules of Orders. Nominations are now in order for Chairperson of the Carteret County Schools Board of Education. Board members, are there nomination for Chairperson for the Carteret County Public Schools Board of Education? I move Clark Jenkins for Chair. Mr. Jenkins is nominated. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Jenkins to serve as the Chairperson for the Carteret County Schools Board of Education, please state aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Jenkins.
Well, thank you.
It's on you.
I guess it goes to me now.
Yes.
All right, now we need to move on to Vice Chair. And do we have any nominations on the floor for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Brittany Wheatley.
Ms. Wheatley has been nominated. Any other nominations? Very good. Ms. Wheatley has been nominated. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Very good. And you get another year as well, Ms. Wheatley.
Thank you.
How exciting. I'd just like to tell everybody, thank you for coming tonight. It's December. Christmas is right around the corner. Mr. McKay had some great Christmas music on, and I am very excited about our meeting tonight, and I'm really excited about the new year coming up. So we're going to move on with a whole bunch of recognizations, so Dr. Jackson will do that for us.
Thank you. Good evening again, Board members and all those who are present. We're extremely excited to have the opportunity to recognize students in a variety of areas and staff members as well. The first recognition we have for you this evening, we'd like to recognize a senior at Croatan High School, Ms. Navaya Sales. I believe she's actually just outside the door and is going to be stepping in. Board members, Navaya is the state champion, cross-country champion, who won that championship at the IBM Redmond Sports Complex in Kernersville, November 6th. Congratulations, state champion.
She won it easily, also.
Yeah. Keep standing up. Keep standing up.
All right.
Board members, while you're standing, I'd like to invite in some of Navaya's teammates. The Croatan High School Men's Cross-Country Team placed second in the state at the State Cross-Country Championship at the same complex in Kernersville, November 6th. Congratulations to our state runners-up from Croatan High School. Congratulations, guys. Board members, at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Heather Boston, who's our Director of Student Support Services, and Ms. Allison Dees, who's our Director of Career and Technical Education for two very special student recognitions. Ms. Boston, Ms. Dees?
Hi, thank you. The, I'll wait for y'all to get seated.
We're confused.
Unless you want to.
You're going to have to stand back up. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established by President Lyndon Johnson in 1964, and since that time, the program has honored over 8,000 outstanding high school seniors. The mission of the program is to recognize and honor outstanding high school seniors and thereby encourage high attainment among all students. So first, there are two categories, the first one being the general education nominee. And so first, I would like to recognize Juan Lara Torres. He is a senior at MAST. Come on up.
Congratulations.
Mr. Johnson, come on up this way.
Yes.
Same idea for just a second.
Yes, all right. So Juan has a GPA of 4.667. Yes. He was the first student in his cohort to complete the Associate of Arts degree and is on track to complete his Associate of Science before he graduates from MAST. Yes. He is bilingual. He speaks both Spanish and English. He has maintained his strong academic performance while working, being an active member of her CTSOs, and being a member of a travel soccer club for the last four years. She has been a lifeguard for Fort Macon for the last three years and will be the headguard for all new employees this summer. Meredith is a well-rounded student who is not afraid to participate and take the lead. She plans to attend a four-year university and major in agriculture with a primary focus on the supply chain, and we could not be more proud of her to recognize her as Carteret County Public Schools Presidential nominee in the Career and Technical Education category.
Board members, at this time, we have the opportunity to recognize a couple of staff members. I'd first like to invite forward an incredible teacher who also happens to be from Croatan High School, Mr. Stevens, if you would please come forward. Mr. Jim Stevens teaches in the Exceptional Children's Program. He has been selected as the 2021-2022 EC Exceptional Educator and represented our school system admirably, incredibly well, at the North Carolina 2021 70th Conference on Exceptional Children. Congratulations, Mr. Stevens.
And Mr. Stevens, before you leave, I've watched Mr. Stevens work for the past several years, and what you do is heroic. I mean, I've never seen or heard an ugly word come out of your mouth until the other day at Lowe's. I tried to return an appliance, but.
I returned it.
But I think you are a saint, and we are so fortunate to have you, and I just really, really appreciate what you do for our county, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, I'm incredibly excited to invite forward Ms. Allison Graham. As Ms. Graham comes forward, I'm just very excited to share with you that Ms. Graham has been selected as the North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association North Carolina Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year, representing the state of North Carolina. She serves as our state's representative for the National Association of Secondary School Principals, which will select an Assistant Principal of the Year for the entire country, and we're looking forward to her being back when she receives that recognition. She will be attending a national principals conference in 2022 and does an incredible job at Morehead City Middle School. Ladies and gentlemen, the 2022 North Carolina Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Allison Graham. Congratulations. I'd like to invite back up, the guy behind the camera, we'll make him stand in front of it this time. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, DPI's Digital Teaching and Learning Division, has selected our own Carteret County Public Schools Chief Technology Officer, Mike McKay, as the 2021-2022 Southeast Regional Chief Technology Officer of the Year and will go forward in the state competition representing our region. Congratulations, Mr. McKay.
Good job.
Yeah, we can sit for this one.
Board members, we are closing in on that special holiday treat. I promised you if you would stand there and take all those pictures, so thank you for doing that. I know how much you enjoy recognizing so many of our students and staff members. Before we continue on, though, I do want to recognize our own Board of Education. The Carteret County Public Schools Board of Education was recognized by the state North Carolina School Boards Association with the Silver Bell Award, and that's actually in the framed certificate next to Mr. Whitford. That award is for your commitment to your own personal professional development and pursuit of those things that are required statutorily for Board of Education members, but for you going above and beyond. So congratulations to our Board of Education. We certainly appreciate each of you. At this time, I'd like to invite forward maybe the lady of the evening, Ms. Kay Zemorino. As many recognitions as we've had from Croatan High School, Croatan High School, as you know, Board members, come on up, Ms. Zemorino, won the state Wachovia Cup, Wells Fargo Cup, and actually, this evening, we have for Croatan High School and the conference Wells Fargo Cup. What I love about this particular competition is that in the Wells Fargo Cup, every sport counts equally. So women's golf is just as important as football, it's just as important as volleyball, it's just as important as track, and so to win the cup means that the entire school athletics program is committed to every student athlete and all of their teams, and so we have the conference cup for Croatan High School.
(Inaudible).
Would this be in a program?
Yes, we can.
Go ahead.
No, no.
Go ahead.
Actually, a little proud.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do we need to keep standing up?
Yes, thank you. The other cup there is actually for West Carteret High School. Principal Paletti has had a wrestling match that Ms. Zemorino is going to be racing across town to get to in just a few moments, the county championships in wrestling this evening, and so we'll be delivering West Carteret's conference Wells Fargo Cup as well. So congratulations to West Carteret High School for earning that award. Thank you for delivering that. And now, Board members, to the holiday treat that I have been promising you earlier, I was able to travel to Winston-Salem to see this group represent our school system at the North Carolina Music Educators Conference in Winston-Salem. At your places, Board members, you have a copy of the program. This group was invited by the state Music Educators Association to perform for the entire conference. They represented our school system, and I can't tell you how proud I was to be in the audience in Winston-Salem, along with my colleagues from across the state, as our young men and women represented us. They are ably led by Mr. Ashton Humphries. Board members, invite a guest, all who are here with us, the Croatan High School Vocal Ensemble, Maestro.
(Inaudible).
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 Sleep in heavenly peace. Sleep in heavenly peace. Silent night, holy night. Shepherds quake at the sight. Glories stream from heaven afar. Heavenly hosts sing hallelujah. Christ the Savior is born. Christ the Savior is born. Silent night, holy night. Son of God, love's pure light. Radiate keys from thy holy face. With the宠 of redeeming grace. Jesus Lord at thy birth. Jesus Lord at thy birth.
If you want to rotate them around, we'll take a picture of the choir as we recognize them for this state opportunity.
You're all done, are you?
Board members, as they are getting in place for this photo, I also want to recognize Mr. Ashton Humphries. He's taught at Croatan High School. An amazing, amazing educator for, I believe, seven years now. He was recognized by his colleagues across the state with the American Choral Directors Association Choral and Artistry Award. Congratulations, Mr. Humphries. Congratulations.
All right, real quick, I just want to let y'all know how incredible y'all were, and I am proud of every single one of you, and I hope y'all have a blessed Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
That was a great job. It really was.
Stay grace.
Thank you guys so much.
Great job.
That was beautiful.
Y'all come back anytime you want to.
Yes.
Once a month.
I think we should start off every meeting.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Did anybody else get shivers?
I know, it's beautiful.
I started crying.
I know. I'm a crier.
Oh, should we just end now? Maybe not, we'll keep going. Next up, we have got, I'm looking for approval of the meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to add closed session to the end of this meeting for confidential personnel matters pursuant to general statute 143-318.11A6.
I have a motion to amend, add a closed session. Do I have a second? Second. Second. I have a second by Reverend Goodwin. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amended agenda.
I have a motion by Mr. McLean to approve the amended agenda. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Ms. Wheatley has seconded that. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. The agenda has been approved, and now it is time for me to read this green sheet. And it has changed a little bit, so y'all bear with me. It is now time for public comment. Anyone present tonight wishing to make comments should have filled out a request to speak public comment form. To ensure civility, relevance, and time management, there are specific requirements for public comments set forth in school board policy. They include, comments are limited to matters pertaining to public education. The speaker shall state his or her name at the beginning of his or her comment. Speaking time will be limited to three minutes per person. A three-minute timer will appear on the TV screens in the bottom corner. The timer will beep when there are 30 seconds remaining. It will then beep a final time when your time is up. For civility and decorum, no speaker shall make obscene remarks or issue personal attacks or insults. No complaint against a school employee or student will be permitted, although this may be heard in closed session at a later date following consultation with the superintendent. Much information about individual students, including a speaker's own child, is confidential under state and federal law, and we discourage and often prohibit such information in open session. Chairperson may immediately terminate any comments that violate these rules. Board members will not respond to questions except occasionally to request clarification. And with that said, our first speaker tonight is Ms. Dana Vincent-Moll.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you said, I'm Dana Vincent-Moll. I have three students in this county at three different schools. It's been a little over two years since I first stood in front of you. A lot has changed. I have hair. I'm no longer going through chemo, so this is a victory. I feel a lot better and very excited about things coming forward. Another victory that I'd like to point out is that our state passed a budget that includes recurring funds for cooperative and innovative high schools. So I am excited for what the future holds for MAST in this county. I'd like to remind you guys that there's 133 of those type of high schools in the state of North Carolina, and that Carteret County deserves to have one to offer their students for student choice. I want, I know and I realize that the decisions behind any school in this county does not come easy or quick, and there's a lot of planning and thought process involved. So I would encourage you to talk to the current students of MAST. I would encourage you to talk to the current and former employees, staff, administration, parents, people in the county. I think there's a lot of misconceptions on what that type of high school is or could be. And so I just want to briefly read real quick a couple of things concerning these. As I said, North Carolina has 133 cooperative innovative high schools that target students who are at risk of dropping out of high school, first-generation college students, and/or students that would benefit from accelerated learning opportunities. North Carolina consistently, those type of high schools in North Carolina historically have performed higher academically on average than traditional high schools. I know personally, I have a child that attends MAST. I have a child that attends another high school in this county. Not every school is for every student. So I am excited to see what comes forward here in the future. I encourage you to talk to students, staff, parents, other counties, as we have so many very wonderful opportunities in the state of North Carolina. I want Carteret County to have those as well. Second thing I'd like to touch on, I just want to thank you guys for your part in allowing Carteret County students to go to the FFA National Convention. It was back in October. I personally attend for my job. My company sends me there every year, and it's exciting to see North Carolina students. It was real exciting to see Carteret County students and staff that attended. That is an amazing opportunity, and I know making the decision to allow them to go this year was probably not easy with all of the pandemic and scariness that's been in the last couple of years. But my daughter was one of the ones that was able to attend, and I know Ms. Chadwick's was as well, and I don't know if hers is like mine. They haven't stopped talking about it yet. It is an amazing opportunity, and I just want to thank you for allowing them to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moll. Next up, we've got Mr. Stephen Kirstein.
Hello, board members. I'm Stephen Kirstein. Dana was just talking about, I want to thank everybody on the local level and the state level that assisted with the budget for approving the reoccurring funds for MAST and the seven other innovative high schools within the state. Neil, you got your present. We got the open kimono of the funds that you've been asking for. So with that being said, I can't wait to have the school accept another hundred and some odd students this next school year. If Mr. Johnson needs assistance, I will also render my aid to him for the application process for all the new enrollees and get these kids notified ASAP so they'll be able to start that school. So they're representing all the high schools within our county. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirstein. Next up, we've got Ms. Deanna Hayden.
Hello. Unfortunately, I'll be your third one on the same pitch. I did run mine past Mr. Johnson there. He said I had to re-change my wording.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
The bottom line is, is the majority of y'all, pretty much everybody won, said the reason for closing MAST was because of funding. The money is there now. It's not going to be a year-by-year debate, like most of y'all said. There's no reoccurring on it. We do have it reoccurring. It's guaranteed. So I am pleading with you guys who said, all of you who voted no because of funding, you now should be voting yes. And this is your opportunity to prove to the community that closing MAST was not political. Because if it was truly because of funding, you guys should be able to open that school right back up. Political says there are alternative motives for closing that school. There shouldn't be any. If it's because of cutting out of kids from down east, well, then I strongly suggest that maybe we look at redistricting, because that's what most other districts do, is they redistrict. You know, they're overcrowded at Croatan or overcrowded at West. If you took 200 kids and put them over there with Mr. Johnson, which I have ultimate faith in being able to control them, because we know you do a great job controlling those kids. Thank you. That would relieve some of the pressure there. You can, you can let that school do. Now, I know that we're working on another committee. You had a committee five years ago when you started, voted to start that school. You had a committee four years ago when you debated about shutting the school down or not, and now we have another committee going. I don't know how many committees you need to beat the same horse. The horse is dead. The state has given us funding to bring it back to life. Please, for the love of God, for kids like mine, give them the opportunity to succeed. Because without MAST, my kid would be a dropout, and he would not be doing the dropout program. He'd be working at McDonald's, doing whatever. And Mr. Day and I had a conversation at the last board meeting I was at. He got offered $20 an hour at 17 with his welding. $20 an hour for a 17-year-old kid. Like, that's millions of dollars for them. Okay? The school is there. He's working in the county. He's currently using his certifications in the county. That was y'all's fears. These kids leave and they never come back. That school keeps these kids here. From that, there's kids that are in the building. There's kids in every aspect of there. The cosmetology kid that won for the Skills USA, she's staying in the county. That school is keeping these kids in the county. Your education is staying here. So please, prove to me that it was not political, that you're really in it for these children, and allow other students to have the same opportunity, because you need to do it now. We need to get these kids in middle school that are starting to be at risk and catch them early. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayden. Next up, we've got Ms. Kristy Schrock.
Hello, board. My name's Kristy Schrock, and I am here on a different agenda today. My son is a third grader at Morehead City Primary School, and a handful of mistakes and miscommunications were made during a 14-day quarantine period in which he was considered a close lunch contact. It was my understanding that we are not quarantining close contacts during lunch. However, my son was embarrassed when he was pulled from his classroom without my knowledge because of the health department's inability to contact me in a timely manner, being before I sent him to school Monday morning, no one had contacted me. So he was pulled out of his class in front of his friends, put into isolation in the, in the library with three worksheets to do all day. I was not contacted until the end of the day when he told me what had happened. He didn't understand. He thought he was being punished, and rightfully so, because he was left alone, never checked on. He missed a total of seven days of school because he's healthy. I could have given him a useless test because he's not showing any symptoms. I could have sent him to school wearing a mask, but I was not going to do that because he's already been upset enough over the situation that I didn't want to put him through further detriment. I could have put him, he's a very active and healthy child. He already does not enjoy going to school, aside from the PE recess and friends that he gets to see. So, and I can't imagine why, God bless our kids for having to go through what they've gone through the last 18 months already. But I'm trying to get him to better his skills at reading, and it seems that I'm learning a lot more now that I've had him at home the last seven, 14 days. But I did not want to allow him to go to school and have to wear a mask, because he does have a mask exemption. But that's my understanding that he had to wear a mask even through the 14-day quarantine period. But my biggest concern is that these kinds of miscommunications and inefficiencies in the system do not happen to another child. Because I'm lucky enough and blessed enough to not have to report to a job or leave him in school, isolated, aside from where he can't be with his peers because of something beyond his control, because the health department does not get paid to call people on the weekends or on a late Friday to let them know that their child was a close contact. If the, if the matter is so urgent, it should have been communicated at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Schrock.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got Dylan Reed.
Hello, I'm Dylan Reed. I have a son at Broad Creek Middle, and it's, he's a special ed student. I'm special ed certified, elementary ed certified, K-12 PE. So I know a little bit about education, pedagogy, scaffolding, things like that. And I don't think Google is a good teacher for our children. They need textbooks. My son came home, and we're working on projects, and we have to search Google in order to get a definition of something. You have 20 kids in a classroom, they're going to come up probably with 20 different things. And you just, if your scaffolding is not structured correctly, it's just going to crumble, and students are going to learn different little bits. It could be misinformation, it could be wrong information, it could be right information. And I just find it hard that we have the textbooks in the classroom, but we're not using them. And the definitions that you get for some of these things like cytoplasm and things that, and the maps for social studies projects and things, you Google search it, there's 50 different maps for Eric the Viking and the other first explorers, and you don't know which map to use. And so it's best to have a textbook, a set curriculum, in front of them so that they can say, this is exactly what I need to write down and, and learn. Explicit information is how you teach students. I mean, I, I know that from special education. If you don't have that explicit boom, flat information for them, they're off in the weeds somewhere. And another thing with the Google aspect, with their censoring of some, I don't want to get political, but they do censor certain ways, and that information can also lead children into different paths that maybe their parents don't want them to. And also, the school, I don't know what it's called, parent net, whatever, security, you can't go on this website. A lot of those pictures and things that they need to make larger and actually get the information, like cite it, you can't click on those and go to that unless you have your own laptop and your own internet. So that, I just have a concern. I'd like you to look into it, and, I mean, we have the books. We need to use them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Next is Brian Nick, Nick Lo?
Nick Lo.
Nick Lo. You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank everyone for all your efforts and your dedication to our communities. I want to thank our teachers, and I want to recognize this historic day of those who went before us on Pearl Harbor Day, and pay your respects to them. I'm here, kind of, I put on my sheet there, I was just going to talk about some general things, and I may have misread the agenda. I thought we're going, I saw something in there, masks, and it alarmed me, not mask, but mask, M-A-S-K. So I'll make a note of the previous, one of the previous speakers. My granddaughter attends Boggs Sound Elementary School. She was a close contact, and she was quarantined for a week, and then was able to go back to school and wear her mask for a week, and after that, she was cleared and then, you know, back into normal, normal education. I don't have much to say about that, other than that's what it is. We complied, we followed, we didn't give her tests. We were like the previous speaker, we were able to, my wife and I, grandparents, we were able to stay home, watch her, but it creates a problem, but you have no choice in that, I guess, due to the protocol. People just have to adjust. With everything in the news now with the different continued COVID and different variants that are coming about, I'm concerned again about mask wearing. And I just want to say a few things about that. First of all, this is from my granddaughter. She said it makes no sense. They sit into lunch, they take their mask off. She goes, we're closer to each other in the lunchroom than we are in the classroom. It's just a contradiction. I just think it's unhealthy, and, and I don't have science to back what I'm saying, but I think it's more unhealthy that they wear their mask for a continued amount of time in the classroom, because they're touching things in their finger, and they're adjusting, they're pulling their mask down, not over their nose, and I don't think the teachers want to be Gestapo and disrupt their class to correct their children every time. So my concern is, and why I'm talking tonight, is that I just want to implore or compel or ask you to be careful if we have to consider mask wearing again. Because again, I'll, I'll read what I have here. I contend mask wearing is less healthy. If you do go back, back to mask mandates, I ask that you make the exemptions available quickly to parents, and I should probably already have that done, but make it approval within 24 hours if you do go back to mask mandates. And here, I'll read this until my time is up. All governments are without authority to interfere with any freedom or liberty stated and declared in any state constitution. Do not declare that all for-profit partnerships, Title 42 revenue generating programs are unlawful to be used against people with any type of government agents using any force or coercion for themselves or the corporate entities created in any state by permission of the people. I guess, I read that statement, I didn't write it, but I read it. I look at this affidavit that I pulled offline. I know it's a conspiracy theory, I guess, but I read that because I know there might be money involved in COVID programs and, and different things that we may be doing as a county. And I, I don't know that for fact, but maybe you can educate me and the, and the public about that if there's monies involved in our COVID protocols.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that ends our evening of public forum. We will now move on to approval of the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Reverend Goodwin has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Ms. Statler. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Moving right along. Now we are, now we have got an update from the East Carteret High School feeder pattern meeting. Dr. Jackson.
Thank you very much. I will simply mention that last year, we heard a lot of feedback from PAC members, from board members, from staff members, that they'd like to have the opportunity to have more of a dialogue with board members when the PAC meetings, the parent advisory council had the opportunity to meet with parents. We had our second PAC feeder pattern meeting at East Carteret. Previously, we were at Croatan. Next week, we'll be at the West Carteret feeder pattern meeting. Ms. Wheatley and Ms. Chadwick were both present and had the opportunity to interact with PAC members, and I'd like to give them the opportunity to share updates with the full board.
Ms. Chadwick and I both, both attended, and I thoroughly enjoyed the, the new setup. I liked the one-on-one conversations. It was open dialogue. Anyone can, can attend, and they were, you know, we receive a lot of emails, and we receive phone calls and, and messages from parents, and, and we also receive updates from, from Dr. Jackson and others. But sometimes we don't, we don't always hear everything. And so when we're at these PAC meetings, it's really nice to have that open dialogue and be able to communicate with the parents, and I learned a lot. I learned some things that I didn't know or hadn't received information on, just, just things that I think are important to, to know on a, on a day-to-day, and, and I really, I really liked the new, the new way that we were setting it up.
So I like that we had feeder schools there.
I did too.
So pretty much the whole district on our end was there, and it was nice to hear what was going on at every school. It was more personal.
Much more personal.
A lot better than the Zoom meetings we had been doing that were crazy.
And, and we liked to hear from people in the community, so it just made it a lot easier and a lot more open. The dialogue was just very open and easy, very comfortable.
Yes, it was. It was good.
Perfect. Well, it sounds like it went well. I appreciate y'all doing that. I'm excited I get to do it next week with, I believe, Travis and Ms. Statler and Reverend Goodwin, maybe? I'm excited about that, so we'll see how that goes. Moving right along, I think it's Ms. Carwell's turn.
Good evening, board members. I'm presenting the budget revision number one for the 2021-22 school year. Each entry that's in this budget revision is federal funds that we received subsequent to the budget resolution that was presented at the last budget, at the last board meeting. The first one is Title I, and we received the funds for Title I in $1,953,621.36. The next one is the teacher quality, and we received $343,020. The next one is the limited English proficiency, and again, all of these are federal funds we received. We received $53,203.03. received. We received $53,203.03. And the next one is student support. We received $190,857.15. The next one is another pot of limited English proficiency of $7,118.73. The next three are all ESER, additional ESER funds that we've received. The first one is ESER funds for extended school year in the amount of $210,340. The next one is CTE extended school year in the amount of $143,193. And finally, the last one is for instructional technology in the amount of $45,996. For a total budget amendment of $2,947,349.27.
Perfect. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Carswell? Very good. Looking for a motion to consider budget revision number one.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve budget revision number one.
Mr. McLean has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Chadwick has made a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. You did great, Ms. Carswell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Dr. Jackson.
Good evening again, board members. Certainly appreciate this evening having the opportunity to share with the board how we're doing with our COVID operations. We had the opportunity to meet with the board's COVID Operations Committee. Appreciate Ms. Chadwick, Ms. Wheatley, and Ms. Statler for serving on that committee overseeing our data collection and our work in the school system in terms of keeping all of our students and staff safe and safeguarding their wellbeing. As we go forward this evening, I want to share with you where we are and how we're doing. And I've got to tell you, I'll be smiling throughout the presentation. I very much appreciate the hard work of our school system staff members, of our parents and community for their support. I also want to pause for just a moment and highlight our school nurses. This evening, I'll present a lot of data. That data comes to me through our school nurses. They're responsible for all the communication with our parents, with answering questions for staff members, supporting administrators. So we very much appreciate the work of our school nurses. Board members, as you're aware, each month, the Board of Education is required by statute this year to vote on the face covering policy. And so as established by the board's COVID Operations Committee, each month, I'll present to you data in helping you make that determination. And so I'd like to just very quickly go over our current protocols. As you'll recall, in June of 2020, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services published the North Carolina DHHS Strong Schools NC Public Health Toolkit, which has guided and required much of our efforts throughout, since June 2020. This document has been revised many, many times. At this point, the latest revision was November 19, 2021. As the board's aware, as we've gone through this year, the board has continued to make steps forward. I believe that those have been data-driven steps, and we've been able to demonstrate that we are continuing, even as we've been able to ease up on some restrictions to keep our students and staff safe and, safe and healthy. We appreciate that. The first operational change that we made occurred effective September 27th at the start of Week Six for our school year. At that time, the board directed school system staff to no longer, school system staff to no longer contact trace during lunch and to not contact parents of a close contact if the child was appropriately wearing a mask. At that time, masks were required in the school system. And we were able to make that change as required by the Board of Education. The second operational change was at the start of Week Nine, effective October 18th. At that time, the board directed school system staff to no longer contact trace during breakfast or lunch, to not engage in contact tracing during extracurriculars, athletics, or non-school events. And again, this is directed to school system staff. And then finally, the last change, perhaps most popular among many people throughout this, the community, the school system as well, students and staff members, was the board made the decision, the determination to make face coverings optional in the school system. That was effective November 1, 2021, or the start of our 11th week of school. In terms of our current conditions, this is where I start smiling. So last school year, if you'll recall, the week after Thanksgiving, we actually had the highest number of cases that we had for the entire school year in 2020. 2021 was the week following Thanksgiving. And so I approached last week with a bit, I was a bit nervous about what we might see after the Thanksgiving holidays. And actually, what we saw was incredible. Our weekly student case count this past week, which is a five-day week, Monday through Friday, was the lowest five-day, five-day week total we've had this entire school year. By contrast, of course, the week after Thanksgiving last year was our highest. Our student quarantines last week was also the lowest five-day week total this entire school year. We've been tracking, as directed by the board's operation committee, our percentage of students who've been quarantined who go on to test positive that we're aware of. Because if a parent tested a student, doesn't report that to the school, we wouldn't be aware of that. But our percentage testing positive last week was 4.1%. Again, a great metric for us. This is our student, daily student case count. I want to ask you to try to read all of those numbers, but that's every day of school since this school year started. What I would point out is that downward trend, again, to those very low numbers. I actually have through yesterday, yesterday we had a single case in our entire school system of over 8,000 students across the school system. As I pull up here, the three operational changes that the board has made throughout the year, you'll see that the board, and the piece that I very much appreciate, the board has made changes to our operational plans, but we've continued to see that downward trend. And I think that certainly indicates the very, very careful, deliberate, and thoughtful approach that this Board of Education has made to keeping all of us safe and healthy. And we appreciate that. As we take a look at our weekly student case count, again, you'll see that downward trend. This is the total number of cases for the year. You'll see, actually, the weekly case count was the lowest last, the week before Thanksgiving, it was only five. Last week was eight. That was a two-day week. And so it was lower that week. Now, what, as you compare the blue, which is 2021, to the red, which is this is current year, you'll see that it has for Week 15, just one case last year. That's because last school year, we started two weeks earlier than we did this year. So the week after Thanksgiving was not Week 15. And so there's a bit of a disjointedness there. However, what we do see, particularly as we bring back the operational changes that the Board of Education has made as we've gone through the school year, is that continued downward trend despite the fact we're pulling back our restrictions. And we very much appreciate the board's direction in that. Moving forward to our exclusion count, the blue bars are the number of students who've been excluded from school. The red is our staff members. You'll see, again, the lowest week that we've had this school year. We've completed 15 weeks of school. This is the 16th week of school as we move towards the end of the first semester. Again, one more time, the three changes that the board has made as we've gone forward. Continuing forward, this is the percentage of students excluded. And so using our attendance data, students may be excluded by the Health Department. They may be excluded because a parent calls the school and says that their child has tested positive, but they did not come to school. So they wouldn't be considered a school-affected case. But they are excluded or quarantined, or they may be a close contact in one of our classrooms. And you'll see that our daily percentage for yesterday was 1.71% of our students were quarantined. So again, as we look, we see that downward trend. We did have a bit of a spike about mid-month that was prior to Thanksgiving. And again, that has gone back down. And so we appreciate those numbers. This is the county positivity rate. As the board knows, the board's been tracking this. At one point, used this metric for the face covering policy. The board pulled back from that and said, we would no longer use that metric by itself. We would use a variety of metrics. However, we've continued to track that metric. Last week, the county positivity rate did go just above 5%, back to 5% on Friday. And yesterday was at 5.3%. However, when we look at our percentage of quarantined students testing positive, we remain at 4.1%, so below that 5% mark. And so again, board members, in sharing the data from the school system, I do want to highlight that we do appreciate your careful and thoughtful approach this year. We've certainly seen the school system do everything it can to keep our students safe and healthy. And we appreciate being able to wisely pull back restrictions when that was the appropriate time. Board members, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Any questions from anybody? Any thoughts, comments? Very good.
Catherine and Brittany and I met with the Health Department last week also. And it was nice to hear that they agree we are making sound decisions as we're moving forward. So to hear that from them was, I think, a step in the right direction.
And I want to thank the three of y'all for the work you're putting into this. I know it's taking a lot of your time and it's stressful. And I'm glad y'all are doing it. But y'all are doing a great job. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you.
So we need to make a motion on face coverings.
I make a motion that face coverings remain optional in all Carteret County school facilities. Per the CDC's order, face coverings will remain required on buses. Further, I move that those returning from quarantine at Day Seven or Ten should not be required by school system staff to wear a mask through Day 14. School system staff will use three feet as the close contact distance for social, for contact tracing. School system staff will treat individuals with positive antibodies or a positive COVID test, the same as vaccinated individuals, for purposes of contact tracing and exclusions from school. School system staff will communicate in writing required information to the Health Department. Any request from the Health Department for additional information or to provide the school with information about potentially quarantined students must be received in writing. Requests from the Health Department for an individual to be excluded from school must also be received in writing.
I have a motion by Ms. Statler. Do I have a second?
I will stop.
Reverend Goodwin, I'll give you that second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Sir.
Very good. Thank you, board. Moving on, we will now talk about our School Board Association Professional Development Meeting, get-together. Are you going to start with that?
I'd be happy to. I mentioned earlier that the Board of Education was recognized by the State Association with the Silver Bell Award for your commitment to professional development. I very much appreciate that from the standpoint of our teachers and staff know that we need to continue to grow. We are in the learning business and we appreciate our Board of Education modeling that by continuing to grow as board members. And so it was nice to receive that acknowledgement. The general sessions, I thought were wonderful. The individual sessions, I also thought were of high quality. But would love to give board members the opportunity to share what they may have picked up from the conference.
Well, I will say that I am an NC State fan. I attended North Carolina State University and I had the opportunity to, what was the coach's name that spoke?
Roy Williams.
Obviously.
Roy Williams. Roy Williams spoke at the conference and he was enlightening. He was down-to-earth, sort of made me like Carolina a little bit. But his point to everybody was, you know, we represent everybody and we need to have an open mind to everybody and we need to be thoughtful. And, you know, it just really hit home with me that a guy who has so much influence on young men and women at a university in the state of North Carolina looks at things that way. So I walked away from the conference, you know, that one moment spoke volumes to me. And, you know, I just appreciated hearing Roy Williams speak. So anybody else? I know Travis liked him.
I think further realized how blessed we are in this school system and the proverbial hallway conversations. Others that knew of this school system were envious. And, but we could engage honestly with one another. And we are appreciated, admired amongst school systems from just hallway gatherings. And that felt good to be on the receiving end of something good like that.
I agree. Any other thoughts? Well, those are some good thoughts. With that said, we will move on with Mr. Richie Paylor as he's starting with the bond project update.
Good evening, board. I'm first going to share with you some capital project updates, and then we're going to do something a little different tonight. Our capital projects, we're still painting as we can gather paint. So Croatan and Morehead Elementary are still being painted. We hope to finish Morehead L. January, February. Croatan is still, as we can get paint. Our LED gym lighting, Harker's Island, is now complete. Beaufort Middle School will be complete this week, and the next gym will be Morehead Middle School. Our HVAC projects, Newport Elementary School Hibbs Building has its DEHOM project that is complete. We hope to complete the Morehead City Primary School. There's a insulated, a pipe that needs insulation replaced. We hope to do that over the break when students are not there. And also, there's a Beaufort Elementary School room, two rooms that are being converted to tie into the system that's there that was, that they were on their own systems. We're going to tie it into the big system. We hope to do that over the break also. We have our fingers crossed that we're going to receive two rooftop units between now and break that can be done over break, but we're, we don't know that. But that would be done at White Oak Elementary School and Morehead City Elementary School. So that's the update on our capital projects. For the bond projects, I will tell you that last time we talked, we talked about doors. Atlantic Elementary School, actually, they cut two doors incorrectly. So we're waiting on those two doors to be replaced. But Mr. Guthrie and the staff down there are thrilled to finally, we've been talking about doors forever, it seems like. So they have their doors. Harker's Island has their doors. And we're working at West Carteret, I would say about 40% complete there with the door project. For the other bond projects, we're going to have an update tonight from Mr. Keith Moretti, our construction manager, and Mr. Jimmy Hyatt, who's our architect. And this isn't on the agenda, but this will be the last meeting that Mr. Moretti will represent us as our construction manager. And I did want to recognize him. He's worked for the school system for 15-plus years as our construction manager and has done a lot of work. I mean, he's, he's a get-it-done guy. And I would like to say that, you know, I'm going to miss him working side-by-side. We work very closely together. And, but I still have his phone number, so he can't hide. And I know where he lives. So I've enjoyed working with you, Keith, and appreciate all you've done for the school system. I'm going to turn it over to those guys for a presentation.
So, with that said, I got to be honest with you. A year and a half ago, when the wife and I started progressively talking and trying to educate ourselves on moving towards this point, I was very excited. Moved forward, continuing, making some more decisions. Was more excited. We took a retirement test last February. So the wife said, we're going to test this retirement. I failed the test. The end result of that was, if this is the definition of retirement, then call Bell Mundon and put me on their retirement plan. And that's when I'll be able to retire. As we've gotten deeper into this, I've spent a lot of time with Mr. Hyatt and the entire design team, all the engineers. I recently shared with Mr. Paylor. There's some apprehension on my behalf. That apprehension is not for me. And this construction management program that has been under my responsibility as the responsible person, the charged person, has been good to me. And I think that it has been good for Carteret County. I'm a product of Carteret County schools. And all the good that you've heard about Carteret County schools is factual. Even as old as I am, I still remember what was instilled in me as a product of Carteret County schools. My apprehension is Carteret County students, staff. My apprehension is Carteret County students, staff, your elected officials, the elected officials, the commissioners deserve the best, as best that you can get. I do not want to see, and I mentioned this earlier, I do not want to see the compass needle move off of true north in a positive direction for this building program that we're about to invoke. If you don't have my cellphone number, you need it, because if that compass needle moves one degree, then I want to be the first call. I'm willing to hold somebody's hand, to sit in front of somebody's desk, and do what you folks deserve, the taxpayers deserve. So, I appreciate the opportunity. There's been many faces that have been up there, several faces that have said in your, and it's all been good, with the exception of a few, Mr. McClain. It's, it's been good, and I wish nothing but the best for this program that we're about to invoke on, and I'm dead serious. Don't let it falter in any way that I can help, and I'm going to try to do better and not failing at retirement. My wife would appreciate that. A little bit of addition to what Richie said, there's a couple of other bond project issues that, we've completed the cafeteria portion, the roof at Newport Elementary School. There are some procurement of materials that's difficult. He said, fingers crossed that he gets rooftop units. It doesn't matter if it's a dishwasher or a steel beam. If it's got metal in it, it's hard to get right now. So, we're, a little bit of procurement for this additional work that we took on roof up there, but it's, for all practical purposes to look, it's, it's done. We'll get our manufacturers inspections so that we get the extended warranty. The design team, under the direction of Mr. Hyatt, a group of engineers, have worked diligently from the moment that I picked up the phone and called Jimmy, Mr. Hyatt, Jimmy to me, and told him that contracts, design contracts were forthcoming. In many meetings, I think we've completed all of the geotechnical research on all the sites, the ground study to tell us how big the footings have got to be, what we got to do to hold the building up. That's complete. We've gathered all that data. We've completed most of the onsite survey work for all the projects to be able to start the actual building design. A lot of time put into that by all of us, and we have East Carter. Jimmy's going to run through a slide presentation. East Carteret's design is complete. In fact, the project documents, plans and specs, were advertised a week ago, a couple of weeks ago. Have a pre-bid conference onsite next Wednesday, Wednesday of next week, and scheduled bid opening, we delayed for a couple of weeks over into the first week of January, and yes, absolutely, I will be in place for that. And I don't have any concerns other than just what I just expressed to you. My heart is Carteret County, and I want to see that through to make sure it gets in the right hands of the right contractor, that we get what we deserve. Several other projects we'll run through, it just didn't, we have a schedule, a roadmap that we're trying to abide by. We're looking at White Oak as the next off of the design table. It's pretty close. Looking to send it out late February, and then I think Broad Creek.
Croatan's next. Croatan and Western next because of the summer work.
Yeah, we've got some, some site work issues at both Croatan and West Carteret that would be very disruptive for the amount of traffic flow and stuff with the students with the education program in place. Try to make that happen over the summer. The, while we have a schedule, and we're on track with our schedule so far as design completion and be ready to send it out to our bids, there's several different agencies that we're dealing with, the permitting process, storm order permits, border quality control permits, a lot of agencies to deal with, especially when we get near coastal areas. East Carteret, we finally got our storm order permit this week, last, last week. We got email last week. I think that was submitted back in August. We're at the mercy of these federal and state agencies. Local agencies, county, we won't have any problem getting permitted there. They've already got their information as well. We've got feedback from DPI, so we're, we're well on the way with that. Get my phone number if you don't have it. Please call me. And I think we're going to concentrate, spend more of the time looking at the completed design on East Carteret, and then just briefly run through some pictorial views and maybe footprint to some of the other ones. And I had several questions asking a meeting earlier. Yes, when we first started, we had the conceptual design. We called the staff members from the prospective campuses in to meet with us, got their input, the user of the product, which was very important, and leading up to the final design. We've done that for all of them, and as we progress forward with White Oak and Croatan and Broad Creek Middle and the rest of the projects, we'll continue to do the same. Thank you, Keith.
We're excited about having all the preliminary designs finished and the completed design complete here in White Oak too. This is an early visualization. Some of these, and a few changes, we take it again and put it around the corner at Croatan, but just to give you an idea about the additions at East Carteret, you see the gym, you see the auditorium addition. And the next slide is sort of an overall floor plan of the school, and the red block shows the gymnasium, and then the auditorium addition. It's a little bit difficult to see, but the existing auditorium is here, and that's the new part. And you can see that head dark line separates the existing building from the new gymnasium slash shelter. Next slide. So we look at a little bit, a bigger picture with more detail, and I apologize, these dimension lines get in the way of you seeing the floor plan. I apologize for that. What the addition encompasses is a drama area with some breakout rooms. I call them multipurpose. You can practice rooms, ensemble rooms, a course room here with three storage areas, a large storage area here in support of the auditorium function, and then some mechanical spaces. One particular thing about the East Carteret projects is that they're going to be about that much higher, the floor level is about that much higher than the existing building. So we've got ramps in both of those additions to transition from the existing to the new. And next slide is the gymnasium addition, and this is, again, it's a little tough to see, but this is the parking lot driveway out front. Steps up the entrance will take a ramp up here to a door. It's a continuation of this, of this car here into a car, so it's, it's, it maintains enclosure. There's a vestibule here, there are restrooms here. There's a door here that separates locker rooms. So the idea here is that you can lock off the locker rooms and just use the public restrooms, or use it as a shelter. You can make use of the locker rooms, each of which has a couple of showers. The storage areas, there's an office, this location. There is a serving kitchen. It's set up as a serving kitchen and mixing of shelters. Outside that kitchen is the loading dock, and there's a canopy, there's a canopy situation over there. This court, again, the lines are a little confusing, but it's a basketball court this way. There are actually two volleyball courts this way and one volleyball court this way. There are six basketball goals, so you can play two side by side in the middle. There are bleachers for around 200, 210 people, and there's a generator that serves this building by itself, so it's self-sufficient as a shelter.
And Jimmy, where does that break off from the rest of the building if you were going to just use the shelter?
I was just getting ready to.
It's here, and it's here. See, these doors swing, that's the school connection. Those doors swing out. They're locked. You can't, you can't get back into the school here. So if these doors are locked, they can only, you can only get through those doors this way. You can't go this way.
Are they located, I know you, are they located near like the back shop area? Is that what the connection is?
My locker room.
Okay, okay.
Again, there's a key plan up there, and you can see it's located in that back corner.
Jimmy, you have the ability to slide that over, but right now, this, you come out of these doors, and that's just a covered shelter, covered sidewalk. That's now.
I thought that was enclosed. It will be enclosed.
Completely enclosed.
Okay.
You have the ability to slide that, you can picture, you know the campus. Right now, we have covered walkways from the new classroom building to the old, the original school. Part of our bond, there's funding in there for future to enclose those two covered walkways. In essence, when we get through this, you're inside the building from entering in the main doors that the admin, where the admin office is, you're, you're inside completely all the way through to back here.
You can slide it back.
Yeah.
You back it up, two slides, one slide forward, one slide back, it's right there.
They're enclosed, so you.
In here, there, throughout the campus without, back outside, which is kind of focused as far back as when we did the last addition at White Oak.
Right.
That shelter there is now a hallway in the corner.
I'm assuming Mr. Westbrook's been part of all these conversations about their needs and the principal.
Yeah.
And everyone else that needs to be involved.
Yeah. I met with him earlier, Bubba. They actually went to every school and talked to every entity, an individual that was involved, so that they got input from all the schools. Okay, we can push it forward to White Oak Elementary, and that's an aerial view. Existing gym is here. It'll go away, and the gym slash shelter will go back in this place. Next slide. So this is the overall plan of the school, and you can see where the gym is. One of the things that we're doing is that the existing gym is down low, so it comes up to the same level as the main building. And we built this T-end of the connector in the last project, so it will stay. It's just that the floor will come up some. And the next slide will show a larger view of the gym. This is actually a gymatorium. It's an auditorium because it has a platform for the school, stage platform. It's got ramps on each, either side, and gymnasium playing surface here. It's set up for volleyball and basketball. Again, there's the serving kitchen here. There's a storage area here, canopy outside. This is the bus area, so we're building a canopy for the buses. It goes from here back to here. It's part of that canopy there. This plan also has restrooms on the other side of the lobby, if it's here, and showers as a part of that. PE storage space, PE office, chair storage because it's used as an auditorium, where the chairs are out here, custodial areas, and general storage here. Again, generator, all of these, these four shelters have generators. They're independent standby power.
Another imported something, the gyms, the high schools will be a gym, a wood floor. This one, elementary grade levels and the usage for this gymatorium or multipurpose room, whatever, they'll have a sports flooring, but it'll be something so that the kids are sitting down on the floors, whatever, drink or food or whatever happens, it's not damaging a wood, wood floor. The other thing is, I mentioned that we'd included staff on the development before we sent it out, that this is what we want to build. We also included the county folks along the way to include EMS folks because they're to be used as shelters, and we're to make sure that it wasn't just labeled as a shelter, and we did our part, and you've got generator and the availability to use it in times of shelter need, but the folks that are going to operate it as a shelter, man, the personnel that will be operating the shelter, we got their input to include things like exterior hookup for hot and cold water, and, you know, they, they need to bring in an additional bath house, a portable, you see these portables, bath house and showers. From their suggestions and their input, let's say, we've tried to make sure that it wasn't just a building, a school building, or just a gym, or just a whatever, but if, if, if I need a white shirt, then I, I don't need a green shirt. If they need the space, then it needs to be usable for what its intended purpose is. Trying to include the users as much as possible, and along the way, we've had to remind them of necessity and not nicety. We're not spending our money unwisely.
Keith, is it 10 or 15% larger than the existing gym?
It's about 12, and this is based off a memory we tried to recall earlier. It's about 12 feet farther this way, which is to the west, and it's about eight feet farther that way than the, than the existing. A little bit more. Not enough storage at White Oak. What are you kind of.
Let's come up for.
In the development, staff and stuff, we try and make, again, what's needed, what's needed. A little bit, little bit different.
This stuff really gets caught torn up.
Joking, joking.
Gets excited.
And Croatan, classrooms are here, and you go down the drive toward the school. There's a parking lot here. That will move here, so this is a new lot. We'll actually extend this canopy, a lane here to cover more of the bus load here.
Does it go all the way to Bog Sound, the canopy? Does it go all the way to Vogue Sound, the canopy?
It does. The gymnasium where we show it, this initial visualization is actually moved around the other side. You'll see that on the next slide. So this is the overall, and this is what you were looking at, the classroom addition here, the new parking lot. You see that bus canopy that goes all the way to the end. The gym is, you saw here, it's moved around this way as a preference of the school. It seems to work better that way. The connection is a little different. Connection's straight down, straight through this car here. So there's a lobby. We can look, we can look that in the next slide. Just go to the next slide, classroom addition. There are several regular classrooms. There's also a chemistry lab here, the prep area, chemical storage. There's a resource room here, resource room here, conference here, workroom there. Those four rooms are actually small classrooms. If they ever need to be used as a small classroom, they are fine for a small classroom with 10 to 15 students. There's also a foods lab here with a pantry and a storage area, there's staff restrooms. This is actually an EC classroom here. And there's a hard connection to the school here, a closed connection at this end. And then that end, it's a canopy that connects to the school fair and connects to that bus canopy. Next slide. So the gymnasium, again, it's, they're all, all three high school plans, the same configuration with vestibule here. The connections are a little different. Restrooms on either side, locker rooms connected to the restrooms, storage areas, and that serving kitchen here, and 200 seats of bleachers there, and generator, loading dock here with a canopy. Next slide. And at West, this was the initial visualization showing the gymnasium addition at this end of the campus with a science ROTC wing beside it. And then here, it's difficult to see, but renovations to the locker rooms at the gyms and some new construction to expand locker rooms in courtyard space between the gym and the locational area. Also some work at the dining room and a band room. This is the overall plan, which shows those different pieces. Gym slash shelter, science and ROTC, locker room expansions and renovations, restrooms for the dining room and a band room. And the last project is a classroom addition at Broad Creek. Next slide. Overall shows in detail 14 classrooms added with restrooms and complete staff planning area. And to that, a dining addition, which pretty well doubles the space, pushes out into the courtyard for the appropriate number of seats in the dining room.
Jimmy, we had that site plan that we were looking at today.
But you can back up one slide. Let's back up to here. So maybe enough, this is the bus loading area here. There'll be canopies that complement the existing canopy and extend it to give some space out into the loading area for buses. And there'll also be automobile canopy here, so we'll add bus and auto canopies to that school.
Well, second, if you haven't reported, it's been talked about a lot, is the packing up of vehicles on 24. There is a site plan that I don't think we have.
Go back one more. Does that show anything, Keith? He might be able to explain it. I'll look down on this one because this is the road. 24 is here, right? And we want to get them all 24 to there.
Let's look at the other one. I think they, I feel like I've kind of envisioned the previous slide that we were looking at.
Go up on Mike.
So. This is 24 on this picture, 24 would be out here.
Right.
I think 24 is at the bottom, isn't it?
Sir? Wait, I said at angle, but for understanding. But then that side road, I don't know the name of it. But the proposed site drawing that we have, we'll enter into this area back at the parrot, drop off and pickup. We'll enter into this area back here. Can we push it down some? Who's driving this bus?
I'm sorry, yeah?
That's it? So this will be a continuation that goes in around behind the proposed new building. It will be a wider, and then it actually wraps around behind it, and it opens up to more width so they can start stacking side by side. And the drop off will still be in the same location. But you've got this side road to get people off, vehicles off of 24. You've got all of that flow, and it will all be one way to get the vehicular traffic off of Highway 24. If you've ever been through there and drop off time in the morning or pick up time in the afternoon, it is pretty horrendous.
Keith, did I understand you said that the road will go from 24 on that side road behind the new addition?
No, 24, we're getting off of 24.
Into the entrance to Fox Lair? The entrance to Fox Lair subdivision?
Into that private street.
It's Fox Lair subdivision.
Yeah, it's a private street. We have access now. This is in place now. So we'll come in and widen this so that if we need to, we can start stacking side by side and continue on around behind the new building. And we end up back here, and then you exit back out on Highway 24.
They're making you put a turning lane in?
No, sir. We're starting out very beginning trying to not have to get DOT permitting for a turning lane.
There it is.
That's good, Mike.
Any questions?
Is all the site work done? I assume, I think East Carter, you said East Carter at Site Works all done? That was probably the most challenging?
I don't know if it's going to be the most challenging. There's some sewer piping at West and Croatan that we've got to deal with.
So all the site work's not been?
But the surveying has mostly been done. The site, site designs are in progress. White Oak and East Carteret is complete, and engineers working on the other three now.
I got you. And I know we have this, but if we could get a copy of the general timeline on completion, because we get a lot of questions that, you know, the bond's been approved for a year now, what are you doing? So if we could get a copy of the timeline of projects and stuff, it would just be able to help us to talk about it, so.
Yes, sir.
Any other thoughts or comments?
Go ahead. I have some comments from Mr. Moretti when you were finished.
I do too.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'll start first.
Yeah, please, yep, yep.
Since you're long-winded. Thank you, Mr. Hart. We appreciate your presence.
Very much.
Mr. Moretti, I just wanted to tell you, I hadn't had the opportunity to know you very long, but from the moment I first met you, I could tell that your heart was 100% and doing right by the school and doing right in general. And I truly appreciate everything you do. And if you want to wait two years to retire, I will not be opposed to that, and I will stand beside you and keep you fired up.
You don't only need my cellphone number, if you need help.
Wendy.
But if you want to start talking about delaying retirement, I need to give you my word.
Okay, well, I've got yours. That's a good start, so thank you for all you do.
You sound like you're not sold yet. Like he might.
Keith, I actually have a lot of nice things to say about you until you made that comment about me earlier, so. Anyway, I do want to say, I actually kind of crept up on me. I wasn't expecting this because I thought we would see you again in the January meeting, but you have done more for this county than I'll ever hope to do and that a lot of us are able to hope to do. Your relationships with the county commissioners instrumental. You have their trust, our trust. Your work ethic is unrivaled. You are going to be very, very difficult to replace, so I really appreciate the fact that you're from here, you love this place, and that we can reach out to you. You've mentioned that a number of times, and we will. But I can't thank you enough for what you've done. And I've had a relationship with you for the past nine years, and I value that and appreciate everything that you've helped me along the way. So thank you.
All right, board members, any other thoughts or questions? All right, we'll move on to Dr. Jackson and his comments.
Thank you, and I certainly echo the comments about Mr. Moretti. I very much enjoyed working with him. Board members, I'd like to thank you for recognizing so many students and staff members tonight. I'm incredibly proud of the success we continue to see throughout our school system. I'd like to take a moment and recognize some special groups who've made significant investments in our schools during the last month. The North Carolina Seafood Festival donated a total of $5,615 to our individual schools across the school system. The Beaufort Wine and Food Group donated $30,000 to establish a tutoring program. Travis and Cassie Burke provided a new bicycle for every third grader, Atlantic Elementary, Smyrna Elementary, Harker's Island Elementary, Beaufort Elementary, and Newport Elementary Schools through the Bikes for Kids program. The Big Rock Tournament donated $25,000 to East Carteret High School for a new wrestling mat, $77,000 to Beaufort Middle School for a new concession stand, and most exciting, $200,000 to launch the Big Rock Teaching Fellow Scholarship for a senior from each high school to pursue teaching as a career annually, a senior from each high school, and return to teach in our school system. We're very appreciative of all of those groups and their tremendous support of our school system. Today is Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, as we heard mentioned earlier. We honor those who lost their lives 80 years ago during an attack on Pearl Harbor. The memory of their courage and their sacrifice will never fade. I'd like to wish all of our students, staff, and board members a very Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, a Happy Kwanzaa, and certainly all the joy of the holiday season, and certainly a Happy New Year. Mr. Chair, we have been, we are, and we will remain Carteret Strong.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Do I have any comments from any board members?
Any comments from board members?
Well, that just leaves me. I've got two things I want to speak about tonight. The first thing is about the representation of all of our high schools tonight, whether it was academics, arts, or athletics. We had all of the high schools in here excelling, and that's incredible. That's because of y'all, some of y'all have left, but because of what y'all do and the community, the staff. You know, I am proud every day, every time I sit here, I've got two kids in our school system, and I'm proud that my kids are in this school system. You know, like Dennis said, we went up to Greensboro, and people were like, you're from Cardet County? And I was very proud about that, you know? We may not always agree, and we may bicker some, but, you know, we are Cardet County and we love each other, and that's, that means a lot to me. Last thing I want to say is I want to tell my fellow board members, thank you for the trust you have in Brittany and I in electing us to lead y'all, but we lead together. You know, we do this every day together, and I am blessed. Again, you know, we may bicker, and we may not always agree, but we are thoughtful with each other, and we are thoughtful in how we proceed with everything we do. And that means the world to me, and it makes me realize when I go home to my kids that it's not just me representing my kids, it's all of us, and we are trying our hardest to do best by every kid in the school system. So thank y'all so much. So with that said, I think it's time to move into a closed session, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Mr. McLean has moved to move into closed session. Do I have a second?
I'll make that second.
Ms. Chatwick has made a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Thank y'all so much for coming this evening.
Thank y'all.